Board work. Do we have any minutes to approve? Looks like.
There's two. Mr. Chair, June 4th to June 11th. I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes of June 4th, 2025 as presented.
I'll second that, Mr. Chair.
I have a motion on the table for, to approve the minutes of June 4th, 2025 and a second. Discussion. Go through a roll call vote, starting with Ann.
Ann Champa, aye.
Giovanni Verani, aye.
Tony D., aye.
Lynn Wilds, aye.
Arthur Rug, aye.
Jason Knights, aye.
Sean Faber, aye.
And the Chair abstains. Minutes for 6:04 are approved.
Mr. Chair, I will make a motion that we approve the minutes of June 11th, 2025 as presented.
I'll second that, Mr. Chair.
I have a motion and a second on the table. In discussion. Hearing none. Request a roll call vote, starting with Ann.
Ann Champa, aye.
Giovanni Verani, aye.
Tony D., aye.
Lynn Wilds, aye.
Arthur Rug, aye.
Jason Knights, aye.
Sean Faber, aye.
And the Chair votes. I was not here, so I abstain. There we go.
Mr. Chair, before you go any further, could you announce one more time? The date and the time of this meeting. I think we started before it was taped.
Yes, absolutely.
Keep it in mind, just for clarification, so when people are watching, they know exactly which one this is.
Sure, thanks, Tony, and thanks for pointing that out. So we are currently in the July 9th, 2025, Londonderry Planning Board meeting. That is to ensure that it is being caught on the recording, the date's being caught on the recording.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. Moving on to administrative, nope. Kelly, is there any regional impact determinations this evening?
None this evening, Mr. Chair.
Discussions with town staff.
I have nothing this evening.
Nothing?
Nope.
Kelly?
I have one item for you. So I am looking for the board's confirmation as to whether or not you are in agreement with an administrative review. And that review is for a 10 by 10 irrigation shed located within Woodmont Commons along Main Street. So again, this is an irrigation shed, so it's strictly to support irrigation and its functions. It's proposed to be on this already existing concrete pad, right here in between the loop here at Main Street. And we already are in receipt of an admin review application, but given that this is within the PUD, I just wanted to clear it with the board first. I do have some renderings for you as well. So as you can see, they are trying to make it fit within the character of this area with this design, so staff feels it's appropriate, but just wanted to, again, clear it with the board before I go any further, given the fact that it's within the Woodmont Commons PUD.
Can I see the heights again, please? Thank you.
Do you know what the roofing material is going to be?
It's like metal.
I believe it's metal, I think that's what it says.
It's like standing seam.
Yep.
What building is it in front of?
So again, this is the existing pad. This is 30 Main.
Okay, so it's between 603 and the high rise there, okay, thank you.
Right, so it's not, you know, like I say, it's already, the pad already exists there, they're just looking to put it right on there.
Kelly, could you put that monitor on?
I can't get that TV to turn on.
Excellent.
Sorry.
No worries. All right. Or do you have any other questions?
As long as it's consistent with the style and design there, that's important part.
Okay.
So Kelly, you're just looking for a consensus?
Yes, please.
All right. Nothing else, let's move on to, and there's no other discussions with town staff?
That's all I have for you.
Kristen, Kristen? Great. All right, so let's move on to old business. This evening, we have a public hearing on an application for a formal review of a site plan to construct two commercial buildings totaling 3,200 and 7,500 square feet with associated site improvements at 59 Rockingham Road, tax map 13 lot 60-3, zoned commercial C2, Rockingham Road Holdings LLC is the owner, Free Stone Holdings LLC, Adnan Subbatri.
Subbhiavich.
I apologize.
It's okay.
Is the applicant. This has continued from our May 7th meeting and June 11th, 2025 meeting. I've just read the case into the record. It was accepted as complete on May 7th. So other than that, I think I'd like to invite the applicant up to present. And floor is yours, after your presentation, I will kick it over to the staff for input. The board will have a discussion, then we'll open up for any public comments.
Sure. Since last meeting, there was some discussion about fire truck access and the loading docks. Earl and I sat together, and even though the vote at the end of the meeting was that what is there met the standard, there was some concern that if the fire truck were there, that it could be an issue. So we went back to the drawing board and we relocated the loading dock and widened the pavement area. And there's an updated drawing that shows that now even if there is a fire truck at the loading dock, sorry, if there's an 18-wheeler truck at the loading, and it's not a loading dock, it's just an overhead bay, that the road is wide enough that a fire truck could go to the either side and access both sides of the building. So we've done that. Unfortunately, that had downstream effects of affecting the drainage calculations and some of the other documents that go along with the plan, so the engineering department did not have time to review those changes. So we'll be looking for continuance to give them time to review all of the changes resulting from that additional payment that was being added. The second item that we need a variance, I think.
A waiver.
A waiver. I'll let Earl explain the second.
So one of the key components of this design, if we can go to the, well, yeah, so that's going to be the main, if you, can you expand on that one? That's, yeah. So if you look at the top part, where because this is such a slopy site, we have utilized terrorist walls, which is actually above this diagram, we'll start there. So we're using a series of terrorist walls, and that's been okay with engineering. But we also use them on the backside of the swale, which is now the second. So in this, if you look at, this is, what's on the left there is what's been on the plan since submission number one. What's on the right is after we had a Geotech look at it, at the recommendation of engineering, he went through and said, you can remove a bunch of that stuff, and actually I met with John too, to try and clean it up. The main aspect here is that you're having, on the inside where the drainage swale is, or where there's detention, we're using the three-to-one slope that's part of the detail for the Londonderry. And then it has a four-foot top of berm requirement, and then it has a three-to-one return slope. And we were proposing to, instead of doing that three-to-one return slope, to use one of those landscape, less-than-three-foot-high walls. And so we went through an analysis, which is on the left, which I won't go into, it approached it from like six different aspects. The main thing was, we ended up suggesting, just sent it to the Geotech. So Harry Weatherby has reviewed it and said, yes, there's not an issue with the design in terms of holding back the water. That was, that was kind of the rub, as well as there was an issue of maintenance. My argument has been, there's less maintenance with the wall, because you can now, you won't have the three-to-one slope, you'll have a fairly flat slope at the bottom. And the main thing is, it's a ledgey slate site as well. So most of this detail, although it's in different places, the key place is right along the right-of-way line to Route 28. I've met with the state engineer for DOT, he's approved this design, he's okay with it. So now it's just a matter of, can we? But I understand, because it doesn't have a three-to-one return slope, it requires a waiver. So if the waiver's not granted, we will have to either lower it into the ledge, which would be about 300 linear feet of blasting to facilitate the treatment swale and the detention swale. So it's, and we would also have to make up that distance on the other side, and it it would mean major redesign if it's not accepted. So that's why we're trying to say, let's get this settled, so that if we have to redesign, we can try to do it and maybe meet the next meeting, maybe not, I don't know. But if it's acceptable, the design, what we've submitted would be, as far as I know, good to go, but it has to be reviewed, I understand. We redid the drainage calc, we responded to the comments. And this is the only comment that it doesn't meet, it needs, it needs, it needs a waiver. That is a real issue with the design, so. I think we've done our homework to make sure it's not an unstable situation. And I'd be glad to answer any questions, and hopefully it won't be considered something that is unreasonable.
Thank you. I'll turn it over to staff.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Again, I think Earl kind of summarized it pretty well. So our standard, if you're looking at the diagram on the right, three-to-one side slope coming in, four-foot top berm, and there should be a three-to-one side slope coming back out. In that drawing, he does have that showed real lightly. The concern is always, you know, that water, that there's up to two feet of water that's going to be on the left-hand side of that, retained in that swale. That swale actually acts as a, partly as a detention pond as well. So the concern is, again, you get two feet of water there, you got the potential for the piping to occur between the, that two feet of water, and then that piping occurring beneath the wall and breaking out in that slope, or undermining that wall, then you lose it. The three-to-one slope, again, it's maintainable, that's always, you know, that's our standard for that reason, because it can be maintained. I think, again, Earl summed it up pretty well, and it's your decision.
And may I just, I mean, part of the comment was, maybe this is over our over our capabilities, and that's why we went to a Geotech to review the soils and review the. It's also much more, a key component is the water is only there for a very short duration. During, it's designed for a 50-year storm. The little diagram on the rest on the lower right is a heightograph, which may not mean anything to anybody, but we're designing for cubic feet per second that happens on a very sharp peak. If you went with the full 24-hour average flow, it would be less, about 10% of the, and we're only talking two CFS, which is pretty minimal. So you'd be down to a few garden hoses if you did it over, on average, of the 24-hour storm. But I don't want to get too technical either, but that's one of the major considerations. It's a, this is designed to be dry, not to be, it's not a dam of a pond that would be sitting there.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, just a couple of notes.
Yes.
So just procedurally, the request this evening is strictly to act on the two waivers. And then, again, continue, the applicant's requesting to continue to an August meeting. And then lastly, just to note, for the board as well, that the 65-day review clock is set to expire, because this application was accepted as complete on May 7th. 65 days from then puts us at July 11th. That means that you, you know, that 65-day window is when you have to come to a decision on the application. The applicant has stated they're willing to grant an extension of that 65-day clock. However, we just need to clarify how long that period of extension is. So if you just want to clarify that with the applicant at some point this evening.
Do we have the second waiver in writing?
You have both waivers in writing.
It's called summary.
Oh, shit. I was looking on the plan.
Thank you, Kelly. Let's start with the board. Does the board have any discussion items, questions for the applicant before we open up the public hearing? Or open up for the public?
First off, I'd like to thank you for addressing the thing that you didn't have to address. It was a, as you know, we were all here for the conversation, so I appreciate you spending the time and the money to do that. John, with this, what is the, your, let's say your concern, you know, the concern of the water, are we talking potential wall failure? You know, in a worst-case scenario kind of thing?
Worst-case scenario, yep.
Okay.
Yep. We'd undermine the wall.
Is there an option, kind of in the middle? You know?
I think we've chosen the middle option with the Geotech's recommendation to make sure that the soil is heavy in the silts, so that it won't be, it really will hold that water. So we have added that to the detail. And the soil will be tested to make sure it's not like a sand that would allow that water to get right to the back of the wall. So, and we have tested similar soil, and it was going at about, it would creep through the soil at about four inches per hour. And again, we're only talking a couple of hours that this thing's going to be full. So that was the other Geotech, so it'll never reach a steady state, because by the time the water seeps to the wall, it's going to be gone, out of the ditch. So I think the key thing is the Geotech that John recommended, that I have it reviewed by. I think he stamped it as a report, and I'm comfortable from that standpoint.
And is this a case where if this doesn't, if, let's say we deny the waiver, can this still be built, or is this a case where?
It would have to be then put into the ledge, and then we'd be blasting 300 feet of swale, which I think would be counter to environmentally friendly design.
Okay, thank you, that's all.
So just to confirm, you said that this was reviewed by NH dot engineers?
Was it this particular piece? Geotechnical Services, Inc., there, I have his report.
No, I think, Sean, what you're asking is, Earl did bring this to the attention of the district engineer.
Yeah.
So again, when, any development here in town butts a state right away like that, the state gets involved as far as looking at the drainage.
And so they've seen that.
That's what Earl is, evidently, that's what Earl is saying.
And they've offered, we've received their approval.
Okay.
And I guess I didn't hear it. So John, you're okay with the numbers, you think your analysis is correct?
Your analysis appears correct, yep. I don't support the request, the waiver, but it's not my decision.
So can you put up the diagram again, please? So the, the last time I came, personally came into something like this, I ended up with a vinyl barrier to help with the piping. Piping, my understanding is, when the water seeps under and makes like a little hole, and then it keeps on going, and then the next thing you know, you've got water coming out from underneath, and that starts the failure. Correct. Right? And a typical example, when, when this is all, when this is all dirt, then it just implodes from underneath and drops down, and then you get, and then you get a real problem. In this case, the difference, because there's going to be hardly any water in there at all. I don't know, I don't see the, I'm not an engineer, I'm going to shut up. I don't see it. I, I get the failure, and I get, and I understand how they fail, and I've seen the result of them failing. I don't necessarily, that's all I'm going to say, thank you. And by the way, I also appreciate trying to be a good neighbor and making the changes that you did not have to make.
Your suggestion was good.
I appreciate it.
You suggested widening toward the septic, we went out, looked at it, you know, we really can do that, so let's, let's make it happen.
Thank you, I really do appreciate it for myself, and on behalf of the other board members, and the rest of the taxpayers as well, so thank you, thank you for that. And as, again, my comments at the last meeting were not meant to be unfriendly, but I'm very protective of the men and women that work in the fire department and the police department, and it's always in the back of my head that we're putting people out there every day, and what they do on their own is dangerous enough, so we need to, we need to try and help that, and I thank you. I can't thank you enough for that, so.
We took it as constructive criticism, there was no, and we looked at it again, so we agreed with a lot of what some of the board said.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Anyone else from the board? Is there anyone in the, from the public that would like to speak on this project? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. All right. Now the board will enter into deliberations. Board, what do we want to do?
Well, we've got two waivers. The first one, I think, is scale. And I don't think staff has a problem with that. Waiver number two is what we've seen up there, and I don't think John has made a recommendation of that. Am I correct?
Correct.
Just to make sure.
Yep.
But I will go ahead, I'll make a motion that we grant waivers number one and number two. I'm reading from the letter from Sanford Surveying Engineering, dated July 3rd, 2025.
I'll second that, Mr. Chair.
I have a motion and a second. Board, is there any discussion? All right, let's run it to a vote, roll call vote, starting with Ann.
Ann Champa, aye.
Giovanni Verani, aye.
Tony D., aye.
Lynn Wilds, aye.
Arthur Rug, aye.
Jason Knights, aye.
Sean Faber, aye.
The Chair votes in the affirmative, and those waivers have been granted.
And the reason, make sure these get the minutes, is that there's no significant detriment to the public good.
All right. So the other point is, we want to definitely clarify that how much time you'll need for, to, for your, the continuance of this application. As Kelly mentioned prior, we accepted this application on May 7th, the 65-day review clock is set to expire on Friday, July 11th. So, and we have an email that you're confirming the grants, to grant the extension of the review clock. How much time would you want to extend that to?
At this point, we're just waiting on engineering approval. I think 65 gives us, hopefully it's just one meeting, but if any new issues get brought up, it will give us some time to address them.
Can we get August 6th or August 13th?
So it looks like.
I'll base it off their availability.
At this point, what we submitted, that doesn't need to change at all. So that's.
Is August 13th or 14th?
I'd go to 13th personally.
There you go.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we continue this plan to August 13th, 2025, at 7:00 PM, right here.
Motion received.
I'll second the motion, Mr. Chair.
Motion is seconded, roll call vote, starting with Ann.
Ann Champa, aye.
Giovanni Verani, aye.
Tony D., aye.
Lynn Wilds, aye.
Arthur Rug, aye.
Jason Knights, aye.
Sean Faber, aye.
And the Chair votes on the affirmative, this application will be continued to August 13th, 2025.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. You've shared your time.
Excellent. All right. Next up are new plans. Well, we have two new plans this evening, and then a conceptual discussion. So let's start with the public hearing on, sorry. A public hearing on an application to rezone 3385 Brown Ave, tax map 28 lot 009-0 from AR1 to C2, City of Manchester, CO Manchester Airport, the owner and the applicant. The case has been read into the rec. The case has been read into the record and are, at this point, want to have just the applicant introduce, introduce themselves and make the presentation and we'll continue on.
Yeah, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is David Briett and I'm an engineer with the consulting firm McFarland Johnson. We're the consultants for the airport. Along with me today is Jenna Dukalovich, who's the Assistant Director for Properties and Contracts at the airport, in case you had any questions for that. Um, it's a pretty straightforward application. Um, years ago, because of transitional zones and protective safety zones, there was a bunch of properties, in particular, I believe it was a Highlander, um, that was removed. Um, there were some residential properties at the time that were in a lease and those leases were held by, um, folks who work at the airport. So once those leases expired, that's when they decided to raise the buildings. They never did go back to rezone it because it was originally zoned residential. Um, the surrounding area is, uh, commercial. And so we just like to rezone it so that it's commercial, um, which will help in the development of the, uh, pickleball courts and championship, um, venue that you heard last month. So the action tonight would be asking for you to, um, recommend this to the, um, the, uh, council, town council for their final acceptance of the rezoning.
Any input from staff?
Nothing from me. I'm all set.
Kelly?
Just briefly, Mr. Chair, so as the applicant indicated, this is fairly straightforward. I have up on the screen, uh, so you can see the property that's zoned AR one and then the surrounding commercial area. It's pretty blatant that this is bordering spot zoning, uh, at this point. Um, and then.
Definition of it, right?
So, uh, outside of that, when reviewing rezoning requests, um, one of the items to look at is our current master plan, which is still our twenty thirteen master plan to ensure that we're being consistent still. So just briefly, um, the twenty thirteen master plan designates this area as within the industrial village special district, um, which talks about concepts of self-sustaining industrial village south of the airport near Pettingill Road, uh, to promote industrial office and retail development, acting as sustainable closed-loop eco-village where businesses feed each other for productivity.
Kelly, before you continue, if we haven't silenced our cell phone quickly?
I was doing good through that, I thought.
You had a beat down, huh?
I was ready.
I was digging it.
Point is, Mr. Chair, uh, from staff's view, this is consistent still with our current master plan, which is the twenty thirteen plan, um, for this area. And it's, uh, staff is of the opinion it's appropriate to rezone to be consistent with the surrounding zoning.
Thank you, Kelly. Um, any discussion from the board?
Is, is, is this still a piece that's gonna be unzoned, a little triangle at the top, or is that just a blip in your?
It's just a little blip in the, uh, overlay.
Thank you.
I have a question. Is that the area where there's a stone wall in front of it?
Uh, I don't believe so. I'm not exactly.
On the other side of the wall, on the Manchester side.
Uh, that's Brown Ave that butts it right there?
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, I'm not.
Cause I remember before, um, it was the Elms and they had tennis courts over there.
Yeah, that's further to the right.
That's same area.
Generally, yeah, yes.
And skiing and everything else.
Yeah, that's right.
Swimming, skiing.
It's, it's directly across from the existing tennis courts that the, the executive had rezoned. Um, and, and part of the reason of the rezoning is that, um, there's a fifty-foot buffer that's required around the residential zone.
Mm-hmm.
And that, uh, makes it a little more challenging for the pickle courts to build in. Um, there was, um, in hindsight, it probably should have been rezoned once the building was demolished. It just never got done, so that's why we're here tonight.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ann. Anything else from the board?
Did you hear any, um, comments from the residents around there? Cause you have, um, single-family homes around that area, right?
Um, they're a little further to the west, um, and then further down to the south. I've not received any comments. I don't know if there's anything that came into the town.
Yeah, but this is a public hearing, Ann, so the butters were notified.
Oh, okay.
Excuse me.
All right, thanks, Ann.
Thank you.
All right, hearing, nothing else, I'll, I will open up the public hearing. If there's anyone from the public that wishes to speak on this project, please come forward. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and move, all right, move the board into deliberations. All right, um, so board, in front of us is a, uh, the application to, the rezoning application that we would need to vote to make a recommendation to our town council.
Mr. Chair, I will move that we recommend to the town council approval of the rezoning request to rezone three-three-eight-five Brown Avenue, tax map twenty-eight, lot zero zero nine dash zero, owned by the City of Manchester, care of Manchester Boston Regional Airport, from agricultural residential one to commercial two.
I'll second that, Mr. Chair.
I have a motion and a second. Um, any discussion from the board? And let's move on to a roll call vote, starting with Ann.
Ann Champ, aye.
Giovanni Verani, aye.
Tony D, aye.
Lynn Wilds, aye. Arthur Rug, aye.
Jason Knights, aye.
Sean Faber, abstain.
And the chair votes in the affirmative. We have opposite voted to send this off to the council to recommend that, that piece of, that area gets rezoned from AR one to C two. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, board. Thank you to staff.
We'll let you know when the, when the council meeting's scheduled.
All right, next order of business is a public hearing for a formal review of a condominium conversion at ninety-nine Rockingham Road, tax map thirteen, lot forty-three, zoned AR one. Ninety-nine Rockingham Road LLC is the owner, S and H Land Services LLC is the applicant's. Good evening.
Good evening, board. So we met back on May twelfth, when we submitted our subdivision, as this piece of property's been in our family for at least over fifty years. So phase one was to subdivide. We're still working, uh, with the town on that, on the final conditions of that. And this is kind of step two, as we've, ninety-nine was completely rebuilt, uh, and completed. Now we ultimately wanna split it in half and have on one side and the other side, uh, as a duplex.
Excellent. Um, and before we move on, I, I apologize.
I need to complete this.
We need to, um, make a vote for completeness.
Mr. Chair.
Apologize.
I'll make a motion that we, uh, deem this application complete. That is, so the board has sufficient information, wish to make a decision.
I'll second the motion, Mr. Chair.
And a motion and a second, you know, roll call vote, starting with Ann.
Ann Champ, aye.
Giovanni Verani, aye.
Tony D, aye.
Finn Wilds, aye. Arthur Rug, aye.
Jason Knights, aye.
Sean Faber, aye.
And the chair votes in the affirmative. This.
This, this starts a, we have sixty-five days. We should make a decision on this. That's all basically, that's this.
Starts the sixty-five day clock.
Yes.
That's, that's your verbiage, right?
Yeah.
Excellent. All right, so thank you. And proceed.
So I'm Kevin Landry. This is my wife, Carissa Landry. I don't think I said that as well. So ultimately, this is just step two, splitting the existing unit that's built, uh, into, into condominiumizing it so that we have the two units. Um, and then eventually, when we do the other parcel of land, we'll be back asking the same request for that unit as well.
So this is a two-unit condominium where we'll own the right side and then we'll be looking to file the left, you know, one.
All right. Any staff input?
I have nothing this evening.
All set, Mr. Chair.
Board, we have any input for the applicant?
This is usually very straightforward. It's considered a subdivision by statute, though.
Um, is there anyone, I'm gonna open the public hearings. Is there anyone that would like to s- speak on this project? Yes.
Can I just ask a question?
Sure, yeah. If you just come up to the, to the microphone and, um, just, your name and address, please.
I'm Heather Grunier. I'm at Two Melody Lane, which is right across from them. I'm just wondering, when you do subdivide, will the other side also be just a duplex?
Correct.
That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Hearing none, I will close the public hearing and move the board into deliberation.
Mr. Chair, I will make a motion to grant conditional approval for condominium conversion at number ninety-nine Rockingham Road, tax map thirteen, lot forty-three, zoned agricultural residential one. Ninety-nine Rockingham Road LLC is the owner and S and H Land Services LLC is the applicant. In accordance with plans prepared by S and H Land Services LLC dated May twenty twenty-five, with precedent conditions to be fulfilled within two years and prior to plan signature and general and subsequent conditions of approval to be fulfilled as noted in staff recommendation memorandum dated, uh, that would be at the top here, uh, July ninth, twenty twenty-five.
I'll second that, Mr. Chair.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Starting, move to a roll call vote, starting with Ann.
Ann Champ, Ann Champ, aye, excuse me.
Giovanni Verani, aye.
Tony D, aye.
Lynn Wilds, aye. Arthur Rug, aye.
Jason Knights, aye.
Sean Faber, aye.
And the chair votes in the affirmative. You have, you are approval to, um, move forward.
A conditional approval.
Conditional approval, sorry.
fulfill the conditions.
Sorry, Kevin.
Sorry, guys.
Sorry, Kevin.
For what?
Straining him out.
Huh?
For straining him out.
It's, it's, it's my first time running the meeting, so.
What are the conditions?
Just to make sure your legal documents are recorded.
Oh, okay.
Final reviewed and recorded, yep.
It's so much nicer coming, Kelly, it's so much nicer coming from you. He's just like, very stern.
That's why I'm.
Thank you.
I'm just gonna take a look at them to make sure that there's nothing, uh, stating that the town is liable or responsible for anything. It's really between two private ownerships, just verifying that.
So once you verify that, then we can file them with them.
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a great night.
Thank you.
You also.
All right. Thank you, Kelly, for that.
Sure.
All right, next order of business is a conceptual non-binding discussion for renovation of an existing building to add a restaurant and parking at two-thirty Mammoth Ave, uh, Mammoth Road, tax map six, lot oh-two-one, zoned AR one. MHO Acquisition LLC, DVA, Max Apples is the owner. Christopher Solomon, Simon Delia Architects is the applicant. Um, just as a, you know, kind of a noted procedure, this is an informal discussion with the board. Where the applicant is just looking for our feedback. There's no votes this evening. Thank you. Gentlemen.
All right, thanks for having us. Chris Solomon from Simon Delia Architects, um, here to talk to you about, um, some renovations and proposed use of, uh, the Max Apples facility. I'm sure you guys are all familiar with that. Um, I've got some boards. I don't know if you have it as well up on the, on the screen, or how would you like to go through that?
Kelly, we don't have it in our.
No, we don't have the file.
We just don't have the.
Just have the plans, but nothing.
The plans, you, the plans are.
The very bottom there.
No, it's, uh, Landry.
Oh, okay. I was trying to figure out where the, where the farm was.
It's on the website. I'll load up.
We got it.
It was on our emails.
Yeah, yeah, it was on the email, but.
Sometimes, you know, sometimes they make mistakes, so.
No.
Oh, we all do.
Well, I can go through and kind of just familiar you guys with the overall site plan and then jump into kind of the proposed plan. So, um, Max Apples.
Would you, the microphone?
Oh, yeah.
Try to.
Yes.
We just wanna make sure that your voice carries.
I hope so, people at home listening can, uh.
So Max Apples, their existing facility. Um, here we have Route one-twenty-eight. Um, pull into the existing facility. This is the existing, um, kind of farm and agricultural facility. Um, there's another outbuilding over here. Uh, existing parking space is just over a hundred people in a gravel lot, uh, ledge pack lot here. Um, the property then extends, there's a field back here. Uh, so that's kind of existing and there's an existing kind of road cut back to the main road over here. You come in, there's ice cream shop. They'll stand on this side of the property.
Nope.
It's in the main building.
It's part of the large building.
Excuse me, um, over here. And then we have the existing, um, and there's a, a small little kind of chicken coop pen over on the corner. So that's the existing. Go to more of the zoomed in and proposed. So, we're proposing. So again, um, existing entranceway here, existing kind of agricultural building. We're proposing to, uh, use part of this apple storage facility for a farm-to-table, uh, restaurant, uh, within the building. We have met with the State Agricultural Commissioner to review this. Um, they've deemed that it's a, deemed a proper use of an agricultural facility to be using, you know, stuff on the property in terms of agricultural use as a farm-to-table, um, restaurant for agrotourism. So that would be an existing facility. And here, there's a, an existing kind of apple storage, um, part of the overall barn structure. We would be doing some, some renovations to the actual built structure itself to accommodate that. Um, we're proposing roughly a, a two-hundred, um, seat, uh, restaurant facility within this, this building. Um, come in, we've got, again, that existing gravel lot, um, some parking in front of the building, ADA pay spaces. Um, gravel lot here and then a proposed, um, to bring us up to, we're at, uh, a hundred and thirty-four parking spaces total is what we've, we've looked at, is what the facility will need. Um, so that includes spaces for, um, staff of the facility, um, food and drink and beverage, and again, that ice cream facility. Um, and then the restaurant itself with a hundred and eight spaces serving that brings us up to a hundred and thirty-four total. So it's existing gravel lot, um, and then a, a proposed kind of new lot. We will be doing a new, a septic system in the back here, in this, um, kind of backfield for supplying, um, you know, the, the, um, septic facilities for the, for the facility. Um, we will be sprinkling the building, um, or portions of the building for the restaurant. Uh, we'll have water storage onsite to provide sprinkler systems for that. Um, we have provided a, um, light study for the property as well. Um, we'd be providing some, some lighting here. Existing is not, um, lit. And, that's about. Yeah, we just kind of zoomed in on things a bit more, kind of focusing on this, this property. Do have, there's two to three weeks out of the year where, um, they are using this facility for kind of the main hub for apple picking. That's kind of a more intensive use, um, early morning hours throughout the, the mid-afternoon. The restaurant's looking to operate, um, late afternoon for dinners into the evening. Um, so those uses kind of won't overlap. Um, those two weeks out of the year, they wouldn't be having the restaurant open for apple picking. It would kind of come after, afterwards. So, um, for those couple of weeks out of the year, when this parking lot's full, essentially the facility's maxed out. You're not having more than, um, a hundred and thirty-four cars on the property. Uh, they do have some back kind of overflow parking that they've been using in the fields back here. Um, that has been in use for about fifty years for parking there for the apple picking season. That would continue. Um, most of the apple picking happens across the street and then other, other parcels in town. So people come here and then they leave, um, and then the restaurant would open later in the day, uh, for the property. I think that's about, um, about it. We'd be maintaining this existing kind of main entranceway. Um, you've got a meeting here. You come in, um, exit discharge. And that's about kind of what we're gonna be doing. It's kind of the overall summary of the project.
Chair. Uh, a restaurant is not a permitted use in the agricultural one zoning district. Restaurant is not a permitted use in the agricultural one zoning district. And we have a ordinance. You have to get a special exception from the zoning board of adjustment. It's uh, five-point-one-three, farm-retail sale and consumable of non-farm products. The town of Lunedary has recognized the value of maintaining its farmland as viable farm enterprises. In support of the economic visibility of such operation, the board of adjustment may grant a special exception to allow retail sale of non-farm grown products such as ice cream, baked goods, Christmas trees, honey, et cetera. The total retail value of said special exception sales shall not exceed in value the total sales of the primary crops. The board of adjustment shall impose such conditions and restrictions as it deems desirable or necessary to protect the residential character of the neighborhood. The applicant shall comply with the conditions set forth in the granting of special exception and the failure to comply will result in the revocation of the special exception. In granting such special exceptions, the zoning board will consider the adequacy of parking, storage, disposal capacity, required permits, days and hours of operation. That's our ordinance. And then RSA.
One, it's actually, I um, I apologize, I wanted to kind of go to Kelly first. Sorry about that.
So just.
Kelly's got.
Just to be clear, that determine hasn't, determination has not been made yet, what Art just cited. And, I understand that initially this, the applicant stated this initially, but um, the applicant is proposing to utilize the agritourism statute, which has specific provisions and requirements of its own. Within that is the ability of the municipality to make a determination as to what, what if any local ordinances and review processes may apply. We're still in the preliminary stages of making those determinations at the staff level. We've requested to have another meeting with the property owner um, and his civil engineer. Uh, because we have met a couple of times now with um, the gentleman here, the architect and um, Kyle Christiansen, the owner. But, given the proposal, um, and given the fact that a civil engineering plan set has been developed to some degree, we feel it's appropriate and necessary to, to have a conversation directly with a civil engineer. So we are waiting um, still to schedule that and proceed with that meeting to provide additional review and feedback. But um, like I said at the beginning of my comments, this very well may fall within that agritourism uh, state law. Uh, and that would be the means by which this would be allowable um, in terms of the use. I'll say it again for the record, so I can be abundantly clear, we haven't made that determination yet. Um, so we're still reviewing that.
So without that determination, this is premature.
So we recommended that they come to the planning board to get your initial thoughts and feedback. Because that, it's appropriate for this board to do that. This board doesn't need to make determinations about um, what level of review is required. That's something that um, typically is the zoning administrator would handle. Uh, and so, that's the purpose of this easy, evening is just to get your initial, initial comments. Now, if your initial comments are that you don't think this is appropriate use of this property, that's fine, but just um, for the purposes of tonight, like the chair stated at the beginning, it's just strictly to get your initial, initial comments.
Can I ask a question?
Mm-hmm.
So we making those comments based upon the fact that you go through this process and you can get all the other, the zoning issues uh, uh, straightened out and it's approved?
I would recommend that you make your comments based on the fact that they're planning to utilize the agritourism statute.
Okay, that's, that's what I'm asking.
And if I can, just add a couple of things again, so back on April fifteenth, that our last, my, from my notes, our last meeting, again, we had brought up the, the, as Kelly indicated, to engage a civil engineer. Because again, there's, there's things that they're proposing here with, such as, you know, the, the uh, the gravel parking lot that's not permitted in our, in our regulations. So again, you know, that, there's no additional stormwater, there's the wetland setbacks out there. It's glad, I'm glad to hear that they've recognized, they've solidified, looking at two-hundred seats in the, in the, the restaurant, cause uh, my recollection of my notes was undetermined at that time. They know they have to upgrade the, the septic system out there. The traffic is, is gonna be a, another one to, to totally analyze. And I, in my opinion, they need to put it in writing what they propose to do. That way we're reacting to what they're saying, not what we understand that they're gonna do. I'm a firm believer in, what are you gonna do? So we can react.
So, so.
Mr. Chair, is it okay if I ask staff a question?
Um, yeah, just, yeah, absolutely. So, are you saying then that, that it probably, or could probably be, that they'll have to pave all that gravel over because our ordinances or our regulations say you can't have.
Correct.
And so that's gonna change all the drainage.
Correct.
Okay, so, um, can I continue? Yeah, um, staff, any other comments?
Good for now.
Uh, just to, just to highlight a couple more points that I didn't hit on before. So some key pieces to, the statute do include um, taking into consideration, of course, public safety and health compliance, um, as well as consistency with the historic use of the property, which is of, of course, relevant in this scenario. Um, so that's all part of what uh, we'll continue to look at as we, as we go forward.
Sure. Thank you.
I would, if I suggested the board to review RSA twenty-one colon thirty-four dash A, uh, Roman numeral two, Subparagraph B, Subparagraph five, there's uh, detail in there.
I think um, yeah, this conversation, we're, there's gonna be a lot of, a lot of discussions, gonna be a lot of, you know, um, huge impact um, to our town, huge impact to kind of, you, how that, um, you know, how Mammoth Road looks, so I wanted definitely ensure that, you know, everyone, you know, has that opportunity to share that feedback. You know, share your initial thoughts, it's a conceptual, you know, discussion. You know, there's, you know, there's legal, there's, you know, master plan implications, there's such like that. You know, that said, Tony had his hand up first.
So I, yeah, so um, I mean, my, my first knee-jerk reaction was that the ice cream stand, or the, it seems like you have conflicting seasonal use all over that site. Because you go there on a Friday night, you, you almost can't get in the parking lot just because of the ice cream stand. Now, on that same Friday night, you're gonna have a two-hundred-seat restaurant in operation, I don't see it. But, from that same standpoint, just so that you know where I'm coming from, I don't believe there should be an ice cream stand there either. Because that has nothing to do with what they grow at the farm. I don't even think they have apple ice cream. You know, so they're not, they're not, but that's, that's a whole separate issue that I'm not supposed to talk about, I'm getting some scowls from over there. So, that's why I'm not looking over there, cause I get the, I get the stare down. But, I, I do want you to know that, that a lot of the stuff that we do here comes from this book, which I'm pretty sure that you're familiar with. It's a New Hampshire Planning and Land Use Regulation book that the state um, produces on a yearly basis that gives us guidance on what we should do, shouldn't do, or might not wanna do, okay? And I just wanna read something to you because I'm not, I'm not convinced that the agritourism thing is appropriate for this site, okay? So I don't want, I wanna read to you, and this is from uh, six-seventy-four thirty-two A. If you, if you're taking notes, if you're not, that's okay too. But it says that all of these RSA, six-seventy-four seventeen, six-seventy-two one, three B D A, RSA six-seventy-four thirty-two, do not support the contention that the legislature entired and intended to require municipalities to allow agritourism. So I'm gonna say it again, the RSA's, and I'm gonna paraphrase it, and, and you can do the same thing when you, when you come back to us and, and, and do what you gotta do, but the legislature did not intend the municipalities to allow agritourism within their borders. At most, they evince that the legislature's general intent was to support traditional ag- agriculture, but to allow reasonable local regulations. Okay, and that is in the notes to decision um, on page four-twenty-three. So, I'm gonna lean heavily on that. Cause I think there are some, there are some issues with the thought uh, on that. Not to mention that there are houses behind that are AR-one and houses to the side that are AR-one, that I believe are separate owners. That's what I have to say.
Thank you. Ann?
Um, what percent of the building is gonna be used for the restaurant?
Maybe twenty percent at most.
How much?
Twenty percent. It's a small kind of corner, that upper left-hand corner would be used for that.
Well, how did, how do people get to the upper left corner of that building? From the front parking lot?
So it'd be just kind of this corner here. Um, you can kind of see there's a faint line here, this would be the restaurant in this back corner. Uh, you'd walk in, there's a hallway here, you walk into the building, this is all in support of the apple orchard.
Okay, and the store in the front of it still?
The store kind of runs down this, this section here, that would remain, also it's just kind of this back corner here.
Okay.
So we have had um, extensive conversations with the, with the state um, and the agricultural commissioner of the state of New Hampshire, and he's in full support of the project. The, if we wanna go through the rest of the comments, I have some questions for, for you all.
I would like to definitely kind of go through, if anyone else has um.
I have something.
So, let's, why would kind of, Johnny, Lynn, Art, Jason, Sean.
We're always at the end. I'm joking.
Johnny?
Is there any type of um, ac- exit or access from the back end of the building there?
Uh, yes, I mean, in terms of uh, fire access, you'd have full um, access, which we have met with the fire, um, or the, excuse me, the police department, and the um, you would be able to come back here, there's an existing developed paved surface.
People can't enter the, in the back there, they're not gonna be able to enter the building?
You'd be coming in, in this, in the front door.
Okay.
Yep. But for, for egress purposes.
Only.
Fire, fire safety, you'd be able to exit the back of the building.
Okay.
This side of the building's kind of built into the hillside here.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
So, um, well, I don't know if I'm allowed to ask this, but what's the motivation behind wanting to put a farm-to-kitchen dining room, uh, restaurant there?
Kind of continued use of the, of the farm and to keep this a, a viable business. It would serve as kind of a catalyst for people to come and visit, um, to both kind of better, better frequent um, the apple orchard, its existing uh, retail facilities. And then to support kind of the overall um, kind of business plan of, of Max Apples. Having people come here and enjoy farm-fresh uh, food and um, and be on the farm.
Yeah, no, that's what I'm kind of figuring, and probably you gotta probably do, be very creative when you're in that type of business to make it sustainable and make a profit and when you get to the end of the road and you can't make a profit out of it, then all sudden the farm becomes a development, which everybody's saying that they don't want to see that parcel be developed. It already gets a pretty heavy traffic load onto that property, the people are accustomed to going there. It is in a residential section. But it's a fairly well-traveled road, convenient road, it's not down a side road somewheres. You still, I'm assuming, maybe I should just ask you versus assume, you're, you're, you have a use that you wanna tie into the agricultural nature of the property, right? Where you're doing farm-to-kitchen?
Yes, yep.
They've been a long-term business in the town, I don't know, I mean, I think, you know, as long as they comply to the staff's guidelines and make it safe and, and uh, I think we should, I, I like the concept, you, you're, you're allowing uh, a landowner, uh, I don't know if he's a resident of the town, but uh, you, you, I mean, you're allowing a business of the town at least to sustain their operations, they continue to do what they do and uh, I don't know, as long as you comply to all the regulations and you get your zoning or agricultural uh, uses allowed, I think we should work with them, but.
I have another question. Are, are the, uh, does Max Apple?
I'm just gonna go down.
Oh, okay.
The board, so, and then we'll kind of um, have leftovers after. Lynn?
So I read, I'm gonna tie off of Tony's comments here a little bit too, but I read through the RSA this afternoon, I didn't get a chance to really digest it, but uh, RSA twenty-one thirty-four A, twenty-one colon thirty-four A, to me seems to indicate that a certain amount of the content of the restaurant would have to originate on the farm.
Yeah.
And I don't know if that's poundage, if it's dollar volume, or anything like that, but uh, today it seems like uh, pumpkins and apples are the two big things on the farm, and that doesn't seem like it's a real big draw on a menu that I would wanna go look at. So I, I guess, cutting it short, what I would like to see is what you're, or how you view that you're meeting that RSA. Because I just looked at it today, I think it's got some stipulations in it that I would like to see met, or that I think have to be met in order for you to proceed with this. So I, I think that'd be important for me.
That's exactly what I was gonna say, how much of the produce that you'd use in the farm, um, farm restaurant is grown on the property? Cause we see fruits um, grown and some flowers or whatever, but um, as far as vegetables, I'm not sure about the um, you know, the amount of that grown on the park, property right now, so.
And then taking that one step further, you know, is there, would there be a plan to introduce livestock on that property? Because obviously if they have some protein in a, in a restaurant like that, and today there is nothing like that. So I just don't know, there's a lot of, I don't know, you know, unanswered questions in my mind at this point in time, that I, I can't say yes or no, I just would like to see more information.
Thank you. Art?
I'm still looking for more information, also I'm kind of uh, you know, drawn between, is this full-fledged commercial operation or is it agritourism? And uh, so far you haven't satisfied my uh, my, you know, answer to that. But my question would be, and I think it's follows what Ann and Lynn are saying, what percentage of product in your restaurant will come from the farm? Can you give me a number, or give us a number?
Right now I cannot, but we can get that for you.
Having that number would, would definitely be helpful for us.
Any thoughts on us, from a site standpoint?
Yep, we're gonna get to that, thanks. Jason?
Um, I'm gonna echo what Giovanni said. Max is probably, with the possible exception of Stonyfield, is our best-known business in town. It's no doubt our primary tourist draw, places a madhouse for the two weeks that you say, and then other than that, it's pretty quiet, other than Friday nights when it's not raining for the ice cream. The growing season in New England is rapidly changing. This, uh, even with the ice cream, which I do support.
I do too.
It's not gonna, the ice cream is not gonna sustain six-hundred acres or whatever max is of, of the um, farm. This is, from my perspective, a way to make the uh, property and the business more viable moving forward. Uh, it gives us an additional draw into the town. It is um, suitable with what we are doing. It is suitable with what we are doing here, especially kind of a farm-to-table sort of thing. It is an established business that's been around, according to that sign, since, what, King George or something like that did it. I think this is a suitable next step for this. I do think the devil is gonna be in the details on this. I don't know how you take twenty percent of that building and it's a two-hundred-seat restaurant with a kitchen. Seems like that's an awful small area for that amount of people. But that's something you guys have to, would have to work out. In general though, I think that this is an opportunity to make this a more viable concern going forward. And, you know, I, theoretically, big picture, not knowing any details, not holding me to anything, this is something that I, I think could possibly be impossible.
Um, I'd like to echo what Jason and Giovanni said. I think if Max Apples were to shut down, people in town would be outraged, pouring into town council going, gotta do something to save Max Apples. We've gotta buy the property and spend taxpayer money on it. And this is a way to make it more viable, to ensure that it stays there and doesn't become something else. And it is in a use that isn't just straight-up commercial. There is a path to get there without opening up the floodgates to everything else in that zone. It's tied to the property, so I think that's good. The only concerns I'd have from a site perspective, and it's not easy to see on here, there would be no additional driveways opened up, and there would be no development towards the road. The, the current development would be back away. Because I just don't want anything to get closer to that road.
Correct, yeah, there is one, there's, this is the main curb cut here. Everybody comes and goes. There's an existing curb cut over here. It comes and it's blocked off right at the road. That, we would, we would prefer to keep that blocked off. From a, a town standpoint, if, from a life safety standpoint, if the fire department requests us to open that back up, existing curb cut, we would open that back up. But it wouldn't be open for, for normal use, be just for emergency use.
I just wanna maintain that site distance on that road.
It looks like you got a lot of work ahead of yourself. Between the runoff and the paved area filtering, filtering and treating the water. I wanna know who's gonna tell my son that his favorite goat's gonna be a pocket spot, but my son loves that corner a little, little lot there. But I think it's great for the town.
So I think from the standpoint of, you know, feedback and, you know, we'll get back to kind of further discussions, but I, I have a few items. One, Max Apples is a staple of the town. You know, that's, everyone in this room understands that, and we appreciate you all being stewards of that property. It does change what Mammoth Road is today. This project would do that, so as you kind of go through and continue through the process, it will be changing what it is today. Having operational hours, food to, you know, farm-to-table, you know, dinner. I'm assuming there's liquor, and there's a liquor license, and, you know, kind of other, you know, components involved, whether that's, you know, cider, or that's, you know, pumpkin beer, or what, whatever the innovative, you know, business, you know, solutions might be there. Mammoth Road's dark, and so I want, you know, have that in the back of your mind. There's safety implications, I really want to ensure that is covered. From what I'm hearing as well, from the presentation, this is definitely going to be a full-site plan. I don't think this is an amendment to an existing. It's a full-site plan. You're increasing your, you know, just, you know, from my simple mind, you're increasing your, the leach field and your, your septic system rather, the gravel to pavement kind of aspect, you need to really look at that. And just, you know, with an eye to, towards safety, you know, what does it look like at nine o'clock, ten o'clock, when it's coming out of, of, of that area? I would want to, you know, kind of see a traffic study, and what, what traffic would be and, you know, and how that might kind of, how that's going to impact kind of Mammoth Road. Definitely working with, you know, our town staff on kind of, you know, the regulations. One thing that probably is, definitely needs to be said, if this property does transfer ownership, what happens to that restaurant? You have a nice, good farm-to-table, does it turn into a clam shack? But that's kind of the reasons why going down the agricultural, or the appropriate regulations is important. So I, I think you all know that, but I just wanted to ensure that, you know, it's said in kind of public record there, but.
I'm gonna follow up, Mr. Chair, when you're ready.
Absolutely, thank you, Tony. And this is definitely a significant change. I'm looking at the, I might come back on the parking lot aspect, so Tony, why don't you, go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. You hit on one of the questions I wanted to ask staff about change of ownership. So Kelly, if, if in fact this is allowed to be a restaurant, and I'm not sure how, how the language works in this, what, what would happen in, in, in the event of a change of ownership?
So the only way this is going to be, well, I shouldn't say the only way. The way that's being proposed, let's see if I can try again. The manner in which they're asking for this to be permitted is by way of the agritourism statute, right? So, uh, staff would need to be in agreement that it's meeting the terms of that statute for this to be an allowable use, that being the restaurant, which is really farm-to-table. And so within that, the provisions of the statute speak to percentages that have to come from the farm itself. So if it changes ownership, I'm under the assumption that it's still gonna be a farm at that time, because they would have to be to remain compliant with their approval. If it, if the new owner at the time doesn't wanna do farm-to-table anymore and hit those percentage requirements, and they wanna get rid of the farm in its entirety, then they would be changing the use. And at that time, we would need to reevaluate what that looks like, what other reviews and approvals might be needed, if they're going to differ at all from that original approval of the farm-to-table.
Thank you, so to be clear, to be clear, if this thing gets approved, it's, it's not really a restaurant that's getting approved, it's a farm-to-table operation.
And so when I started, I said, there's one way. So I said that because technically, they could seek a variance for the use if staff doesn't come to the determination that they fall within the agritourism, or possibly the special exception route that Art was talking about. I'm just not certain of that at the ti, at this time, but irregardless, whatever approval is given is going to be specific to this proposal. And so if a new owner comes in and they wanna differ from the terms of that approval, it will need to be relooked at by staff.
So put another way, they would need to have A in order to be allowed to have B.
Correct, yeah.
Is that fair?
Yeah, and I should say, just from a review standpoint, the way that the town handles even tenant changes, for example, within, like, some of the strip malls we have, we technically call that a change of use, because it allows us the opportunity to review who's going in, is it the same use that was already there, what's different? So we already, we have that kind of check and balance, if you will, for anything that comes in, and, and ask for, from anything from a building permit to a site plan, so we would have that same expectation.
Yeah, so my advice to the applicant would be to not call it a restaurant, call it a farm-to-table operation. Because once you talk about a restaurant and an AR-one, is people gonna be running around with their hair on fire? And, and, and that's just the, just the nature of what it is. I have some other things, but I think Giovanni wants, has a follow-up on that question?
No, actually, when, when you, I, it actually, I was just gonna ask, so if they, they really need the farm operation to exist to, in order to have the farm-to-table dining? So it's, in a way, it's supporting their current use, which is, I think, everybody appreciates.
Well, but to that point, there is still some question on whether the farming that they have can, can, can produce to support what they're saying they're gonna have.
Or they change what they farm to support the restaurant.
And, and when you read through the RSAs, and you have to go back and forth and back and forth and back and forth on, on the different RSAs, it does mention, I think Lynn said something about a certain percentage of what you serve has to, has to come from.
From the farm.
From the farm, or whatever.
Max grown.
And then there's, and then there's, and then there's, there's, there's all kinds of issues here, and I'm, I'm gonna get all random, but this site, this parcel is not a farm. It's the parcel next to it that's a farm, that happens to be owned by the same owner. But where the Max Apples building is, is a separate lot.
Yeah.
Right? So, so if you, if you wanna follow the letter of the law, and I don't usually do that, but if somebody wanted to follow the letter of the law, they would say, there's no farm on that property. There's a farm on the adjacent property that this owner happens to own, but you see, this is, this is where you, this is where you get into stuff.
The agritourism statute defines what, they define the term farm in that statute.
No, I understand that, but the farm is on a different parcel.
So.
There are lot lines, right? They don't have irrevocable lot lines, they have actual lot lines, which is a whole separate ball of wax. So I'm not asking for an answer now, I'm just, I'm throwing things out.
You're correct that the farm land, the land that is farmed, is separate from where this building is.
So that's something that's gonna have to be addressed somewhere.
We will have to review how that compares to the terminology and definitions within the agritourism statute.
Right, so, and then there's, there's another part of twenty-one thirty-four that says the products have to be derived principally from the production of the farm. Principally. What is that, what percentage is that? I don't know what percent principally is. But, but I wanna go back to six seventy-four thirty-two again as well, where you mentioned that the head of the state agritourism, and I don't know what this, if the official title
Commissioner Jasper.
Commissioner, okay, the commissioner is in favor of this. And as a state, the state is in favor of agritourism. But the statutes specifically say, in the notes, and I, and I gave you the first part of it already, the second part says that the RSAs demonstrate legislative, which would be the state, intent to allow reasonable local regulations. So you gotta get by that too, because it's an AR-one, and you're proposing not a restaurant. Because I don't want you to use the word restaurant, because that's gonna be a problem. So, so, so there are, there are some issues, to be clear. I'm not against what you're trying to do. What I am against is we have regulations that need to be followed, and, and, and you're gonna have to connect all of those dots to, to make it work. So, thank you.
Well said, Tony. The only thing I would like to add, this is more of a practical thing, is work with staff on, on this, and also work with your rebutters and your, your neighbors surrounding you, because they should know what's going on. Because otherwise, if we do have a public hearing on it, they'll be here, and they'll probably complain.
So speaking of rebutters, thank you, Mr. Chair. Have you asked your rebutter if they're okay with a, a commercial event coming out next to their house? I know what their last, I know what their last name is, but they don't, but they don't own that anymore.
But you have a church next door, too.
I know the church is in, in favor.
Yeah, the church, the church is not next to the.
Offered their parking lot.
This building is right on the lot line, and the big white house is also on the lot line, and the, the hood for the commercial kitchen is gonna go right out, right out the big white house, so. Just saying, you need to talk to your rebutters, like Arthur said. I know, I know they have the right last name, but that's, that doesn't mean they wanna, they wanna smell a commercial.
The board have any other?
A commercial, not kitchen.
Any, you have feedback on the property, Ann? Looks like you. You have anything, Ann?
Excuse me?
Did you, I'm sorry, I thought you had something.
No, I just, I, I think if you're gonna have a farm-to-table restaurant there, go all in and bring up the amount of Max Farm produce that's there being used, and, you know, even get meat from local, you know, places that might wanna join you on that, you know, farm-to-table business, and even if you wanna think about a winery at one point, you know, grow the grapes for your, you know, or your wine served at the restaurant. There's a future in that. I mean, if you brought it all from Max, from the ground up, I think that would be a great idea.
Mr. Chair, could I just add one point that I neglected to highlight? So I know that a lot of folks are aware of the easements that the town has over the Max properties. We do not have a conservation easement over this specific parcel. So I think that's important to note, because I could see how there might be a little confusion, so the parcel that we're discussing specifically doesn't have an easement over it.
And that's part of the reason why the lots of lot lines weren't consolidated, so that they could do that. In this case, I, one person's opinion, I think it's gonna hurt them for what they're trying to do, because we'll talk about it at, at different meetings, because it's gonna come up again, but I, I think it's gonna be a problem.
Any other feedback from this side?
I have a question on.
Yes.
Parking lots. So it's very clear that, say, for a new parking lot development, that would need to be a paved surface. This is an existing gravel lot that's been in use for this commercial building, people coming and going. We would prefer to keep this as a, from the state's definition, a, say, a ledge pack or crushed bank run, anything that a vehicle drives over is considered a paved surface. I know in your regulations for a new construction, it needs to be asphalt. We would ask that, we'd like to keep this as a gravel lot to keep the, the feel and the look of this existing facility, not have it become a bit more developed. So that's one thing that we'd be asking for.
I, I agree that I think it would look more in keeping with it. The only thing is, I, I grew up around here, and I went to Max from the time I was a kid, and when it's really busy, that gravel lot where people are parking, you know, this far, you know, they've got a hundred thousand dollar car and they, you know, there's no lines, so people are just kind of parking wherever they wanna park. If you've got a lot of people there for a lot more than those two weeks, that, and you don't have defined spots, people just park wherever they wanna, and so that, that could be an issue.
See, that would actually lessen the use of the property. So if we have a hundred and thirty parking spaces, you have somebody, every other car is taking up too much room, now you only have seventy cars. So that would be kind of a, a decision of the business owner in terms of, are we losing spaces? Because once the lot's full, nobody's coming. So, totally agree. I dealt with that in my own parking space at my office. Everybody needs, they think they're really close, but yet, you know, that door is all the way open and you're not hitting anybody.
You got a nice car, and you don't want any, you don't wanna be within a car doors width of the nice car.
So, from that standpoint, yeah, I would agree with, I mean, the paving would allow for a higher density of use overall, you know, relatively speaking. You know, the gravel lot from, say, from a state's perspective as well, that is considered impermeable already. So no water's percolating through those, those soils. So keeping it in its existing form would be ideal.
That would be, yeah, definitely something as you, if, if this project does come back, you know, in front of us, we would want to kind of, those are the details that we wanna definitely see, and, you know, we, we, the expectation is that you would be following our town's ordinances and such like that. Regarding the parking, I did this evening actually park next to a green Maserati, and I absolutely opened and slammed the door. But sorry.
Mr. Chair, I, I have, I have a follow-up, please.
Tony?
Thank you. First of all, it's a
Thank you. First of all, it's an Aston Martin.
I don't know, I got a super.
It's not mine. It's not mine.
Okay.
And to be clear, when I park in that lot, I have two orange cones in my front and I put one cone on each side. That's just how I handle it. But when you have collector cars, that happens. But I have nothing to do with Aston Martin. It's not my thing. But I think one of the, this parking lot is gonna be another set of dots that you're gonna have to connect because there are some people that are gonna be evaluating what you're doing and are gonna interpret what you're doing as a commercial application, which is a change of use. Once you have a change of use, you don't have, you lose your grandfather's. So, so it depends on who's gonna interpret what, which way. I hear what you're saying, but our regulations and our ordinances don't see favorably to the parking lot that's there now for the use that's there now, but you're gonna do something different that's not now. So just something to think about.
The use of the handicap and elderly out front would probably be beneficial for rampage and pavement. Let's, you know, the whole frontage for ADA purposes alone, so you're probably gonna have some asphalt no matter what.
Mr. Chair.
You would probably benefit many to have that whole front area. The existing six spaces plus the six handicap, I wouldn't even say towards the road with the other, what looks to be about eighteen to twenty, but at least the ones against the building, for the sake of the elderly and the handicapped, would probably be a smart idea to have paved.
Hooking it in from just keeping the floors clean on the inside of the building.
I wanna say something about those parking spots, changing them over now to handicapped. Max always has during the fall, tables out front, in front of that building, where those handicapped parking spots would be with their chrysanthemums and their products. They have them, right, all over the front. They have part of that parking lot closed off too. So things would have to change if you're gonna have a handicap parking there.
Johnny, did you?
I mean, if they've got all their approvals, they have to go and do a site plan, right? I mean, if they got their agricultural farm-to-table variance, whatever it is.
Exactly, they'll need a site plan.
Yeah, so I think, I think a lot of these issues will be, he's a tough guy to arm wrestle with, so you might wanna talk to him about pavement versus gravel.
I know his answer.
Any other questions for us?
I believe so. All right, this time.
We're good. Anything else?
Thank you for coming in.
Much appreciated. Thank you.
Good discussion.
All right. That was the last thing on our agenda. We have no new business?
It's way too early to end.
I would
Stop it. No, you're not gonna take a motion. We have a few things to talk about.
Tony has his.
We have no new business to talk about.
John can leave.
Who's the chairman tonight?
John can leave.
I am the chairman. Kelly, we're set. You're set? We are all set. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Salute, Mr. Chair.
Second, Mr. Chair.
Tony has his, cause it was two public.
Starting with Anne?
Anne Champa, aye.
Johnny, Brandy, aye.
Tony D, aye.
Ben Wilds, aye.
Arthur Rugg, aye.
Jason, aye, sir.
Sean Faber, aye.
The chair votes in affirmative. We have adjourned.
That is outrageous.